All right, good evening, everyone. Mayor Fournier here. I'm going to call to order the January 23rd, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Collo, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we gather here today, let's remember the weight of responsibility that comes with being a public servant. We have been entrusted with the task of making decisions that will shape the future of our community. It's a volunteer position that requires our time, energy, and most importantly, our entirety. As we deliberate the management for us, let's always strive to put the public good above all else. May we have the wisdom and bravery to recognize when something's not working and humility to make necessary changes for the betterment of our community. May wisdom and fairness guide our decisions today and every day. May the outcome of our meeting bring prosperity and well-being for all of our citizens.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where the rich are standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fun topic tonight, important topic. We have the presentation of the RUC 22 March check to the John D. Dingell Veterans Administration Medical Center. I'm going to ask that Sir David Wondoff come up to the, what do we call that, the podium?
Of course, I hope that Mr. Froning is able to make it this evening, so this will have to be a symbolic gesture and then we'll get him to check this week. Hello, Commissioners, Mayor. I wore a nice, I know you got your hair, because I want to look good for you today. Yeah, so for the RUC 22 March, several things happened, right? Number one, we filled up an entire trailer full of, you know, donations and food and clothing and perishables and non-perishables for the VVA 154, and they'll distribute them. They do a lot of good work out there in Macomb County. Also, we raised $1,911 in the check that will be presented to VA, and we're going to discuss how to get that exactly over there in general as well. But bigger than probably all that is the fact, we brought up a lot of awareness of what the RUC 22 march is, suicide awareness and things of that nature. So even if it just helped one soldier or one person, I think that in and of itself is just a really good reason to have this event. So I want to thank everyone for all of your support and have a peachy evening.
I just want to thank Mr. Wondoff for his leadership. It was a great event, and he's been an inspiration to the Veterans Events Committee as well as the RUC 22. We've been doing it for a number of years, and it's really an important message we have to get out there. And the way Mr. Wondoff does it is really important to the community and it makes a difference. And I just want to give you, on behalf of the Royal Oak City Commission, a personal thank you, Mr. Wondoff. Thank you very much. All right, this brings us to item five, which is the approval of the agenda. I'll ask that that item be added. Commissioner Macy.
I'd like to move approval with the addition of an item, a resolution to proceed on Brian Hines, next friend of Ava Hines versus City of Royal Oak Officer Jacob Gusto, as advised by counsel in closed session.
We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion on the motion. All right, with that, a call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, that brings us to public comment. The regulars, I'll give my spiel, and then we'll get started. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related topic, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual Commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Fournier, then come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help keep track of your time. Please note the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes and will address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed. If your questions don't relate to any of the agenda topics, I can tell you our city manager is taking notes here and follows up accordingly. And you're always welcome to reach out to us via email with any of your concerns or questions to us individually, the city manager, city clerk, and we can get those answered for you. So with that, who's first tonight? Mr. Ashley.
My name is Alan Ashley. I live at Royal Oak Manor. I am going to be talking about item number eight, which is the presentation. I was at the DDA meeting last Wednesday. They got an earful about this. We have businesses such as Bar Louie stated that they've lost 30% of their business, and he is not very happy. Other business owners mentioned the same thing, the parking downtown, the back end. And so with all the complaints from the businesses and of the residents, DDA has tabled it. They are now taking to committee to have it for discussion. They will not meet again until the 15th of February, which means it'll be after your 13th meeting and before your 27th. By the time you get those recommendations from the DDA, it'll be six weeks. I suggest that you postpone this presentation until the 27th, when then you will have all the facts. You cannot make a decision without all the facts of the DDA and their recommendations, because they have not made it and it's under committee and study. So I think it would be nice to table that until the 27th, when you have all the facts and you can make a decent decision about the parking. I don't know if you heard, but the rumor is, don't come to Royal Oak. Parking is terrible, and businesses are feeling it. Residents or the businesses down there are feeling it because nobody's coming. A lot of the parking spaces are empty because of the parking situation down here, and I think it would behoove this commission to postpone it until you have all your facts. You cannot make a decision without the DDA's recommendation and their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Who's next? Going, yes, sir.
My name's John Little. I'm an attorney for Jody Bowler, who's here to my left. Ms. Bowler is the owner and resident at 2403 North Vermont Avenue. On your consent agenda tonight, item G is a request to set a public hearing to vacate a public utility easement for a property located at 2321 North Vermont Avenue. Ms. Bowler's property and the applicant's property are connected by a common drive. That common drive was created when the City of Royal Oak vacated a public road that was west of Parkdale. And when the city of, in 1986, when the City of Royal Oak vacated that public road, one half of that road became owned by Ms. Bowler, or her predecessor in interest, and the other one half became owned by the applicant's predecessor in interest. At the time that the City of Royal Oak vacated that private drive, they reserved an easement for public utilities and also added some restrictive covenants attendant there, too, which basically said you can't build on the area that has an easement. The applicant is looking to divide his property into two parcels and build a new home on the parcel that's connected to the easement, and he needs this commission to vacate that easement in order to build the second home. Ms. Bowler, who hopefully can have three minutes, too, because I'm long-winded, is asking the City Commission to consider voting to remove that from the consent agenda for tonight, or otherwise refraining from setting it for public hearing, because even if this body were to determine that it was in the interest to, it was advisable to vacate that public utility easement, it's Ms. Bowler's and my position that the applicant still wouldn't be able to build there, because when the property was vacated, Ms. Bowler not only became a one-half owner of that property, but she also had an easement over all of that property. And even if that easement wasn't created by operation of law, and we obviously argued that it was, she would have a prescriptive easement, which is an easement that is obtained by continuous use over a period of time in the state of Michigan, more than 15 years, which you tack predecessors in interest time doing it, and here that would be the case. So we think it's premature for this issue to be set for hearing. We're asking you to consider removing it from the consent agenda for that reason. And Ms. Bowler would like an opportunity to talk, and I consume three minutes, so I'd ask you to consider giving her three minutes, too, please.
I don't think I'll take that much time. I understand most of what my attorney said. I just wanted to say a few words. I do live at 2403 North Vermont. I have been a resident there for seven years. I have been a resident of Royal Oak for about 28, 29 years. I used to live downtown, used to live walking distance to town, and at a certain point in, I'll say age, I decided I wanted to move north of town to a quieter location. I felt really fortunate to find a home that was on a large lot. It was actually a very unique home with the wide driveway, which is an easement. I have the Red Run Golf Course in the back. It's really a beautiful spot, and I cherish the peacefulness and the natural surroundings. So I have concerns. I always imagined that someone would probably buy the lot next door, there's a small brick home there, and probably build a new home, and it would probably be a wonderful new home. And the gentleman who did purchase is building beautiful new homes. So I have no issues with that at all, but I was very surprised that they might try to squeeze two new homes on this beautiful lot. It will, it will take up really most of the green space. There's been a request, and it was approved, for a variance to have homes even closer together than should be allowed. It's really going to be a shame for Vermont. I will be most affected by this. It will not be the home or the reason that I purchased this home with its beautiful surroundings. So I am not for having them take the driveway and part of the driveway and building a house on top of it. I will be driving right next to a new house, in and out. I have a garage to the rear of my property, so it will be a regular thing for me to try to maneuver in and out of my garage. So just thought I'd take a few minutes to express my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Arbor Leclave. I'm at 124 West Fourth Street. I don't live in the city. I am the new owner of Noir Leather, replacement for Keith Howard. He's been a member of this city for a long time, so I just want to say honestly, after purchasing the business, I have been welcomed with the most open arms from everyone, mayor, Commissioners, city officials, chief, with open arms as a new member of this community. So I'm literally just coming up here to say thank you and appreciate it, and I also appreciate the appointment to the DDA and the Veterans Board, and going to do my best to contribute in return for everyone's open arms.
Well, thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You know, I don't want to say best of luck, but I know you get a lot of hard work ahead of you.
I am so hard.
Just stay away from that Wondoff guy, and you'll probably get it done, I tell you. All right, anybody else want to come up at public comment tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to bring the meeting back to this side of the table. Public comments closed, which brings us to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda or remove anything from the consent agenda? Commissioner Douglas.
I'm not hearing anyone who wants to change it. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Collo. Okay, discussion. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know we had someone come up to join the public comment tonight, and I appreciate hearing the comments. It's the first time, and I know a lot of us have heard about this, and there's a month between now and when the public hearing would be, and nothing else happens, necessarily has happened at the public hearing. This is just a procedural step in what would be the next phase if we were to choose to vacate it. And I know that there's newspaper publishings and legal notices have to go behind a public notice. So I'm, at this point, without knowing a little bit more, okay to spend the next month finding out more of your story. I would encourage the applicant to work with Joseph Murphy and the Planning Department with our legal team here to get us some more information, so then the ethical conclusion of that public hearing would be the appropriate time for us to make a decision over the appropriateness of the lot split. So that's why I'm okay moving forward at this moment.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. So that brings us to item eight, which is the presentation of Downtown Parking Assessment Report and Approval of Recommendations. Is that you, Mr. Break?
Yes, I will kick that off and kind of bear with us as we're loading up the most current presentation. So with us this evening is Mr. David Burr, who's with Rich &amp; Associates, who made the same presentation at the DDA meeting last week, with some additional adjustments that have been made, but will give the overview of the study that was conducted, and will be happy to entertain questions. I did also ask staff, our city engineer, Holly Donahue, and as well as Tim Twing, our Community Development Director, and Chief Mike Moore, if there's specific questions that they get into the elements of the potential implementation of the parking recommendations. So without further ado, I present to you Mr. David Burr.
As we mentioned, we have an assessment of the review of the parking, and what we were asked to do as part of the study, this is not a parking demand versus parking supply assessment. We conducted a utilization study, which is a review of the public and private on-street and off-street parking within the downtown area. We took advantage of the data provided by the MPS system to give us some statistics on the utilization of the on-street parking supply. And we were specifically asked to look at not only the quantity of parking supply, but specifically the use and the availability of handicap parking within the downtown. And as a result of that, we have some recommendations. We, a key part of this was utilization study, and that was conducted. I'm sorry, move on to the, next slide, please. Right there. A key part of this was three days of counts that we conducted in August of 2022, and those counts were conducted every two hours between 11:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. It's recognizing that your peak needs in Royal Oak, you are unique. A lot of communities, their peak occurs much earlier, the years occur in the evening hours, and we've seen that over a number of years. As I mentioned, we looked at not only the total parking supply, but various subsets of that, the handicap, the use of the on-street, reverse angle spaces, and then, as I said, we took advantage of the MPS statistics. Next slide, please. This just shows the total study area, and there are certain benchmarks that we recommend that a community have, and one of those is the proportion of public supply to total supply. We recommend that a minimum of 50% of the supply be publicly available. That facilitates patron being able to park once and walk to multiple destinations. If you have too high a proportion of private parking, that private business owner, great, they welcome your business while you're there, but once that business is completed, they expect you to get in your car and move it and make available space for the next customer. So within the overall study area, about 72% of the spaces are publicly available, so you're exceeding the benchmark in that area. Next slide, please. If we looked at the core blocks, which is essentially from Washington to Troy, I believe it's Lincoln, up to 11th Mile Road, within those core area, you're about 83% of your spaces are publicly available. Again, we're the bulk of the businesses, most of those spaces are available. Someone can park once, either on-street, off-street, in a lot or in a garage, and stay for as long as they want without having to worry about going out to move their car. Next slide, please. Now, we looked at the utilization, as I said, this was conducted on a Wednesday, Thursday, and a Saturday. And Wednesday was a little unique in that our peak occurred during the early part of the day, but on the Thursday and the Saturday, the peaks occurred, and the blue line represents public parking and the red line represents the private parking. And on the Thursday, our peak public was about 60%, and it increased, as you can see, throughout the day, on Saturday peaking at about 60% during the later evening hours. Next slide, please. We also broke this out to look at on-street versus off-street, and on all three days, the on-street parking was peaking during the evening hours. And again, that was about 60% on the Wednesday and Thursday, and it got as high as 73% of the on-street supply, and this is looking within those core blocks. 73% of the on-street spaces were occupied at peak time. We compare that, the next slide, please, to the parking garages, and the parking garages at peak, at maximum time on any of the days was about 60% full. So unlike a lot of communities where there's issues with, I can't find any parking, you have parking available. In the on-street spaces, there's generally spaces available. Now, that's not to say there aren't going to be blocks that are going to be tight. That may be my first choice, and that the parking is full on that block. But overall, the available on-street spaces are there, the available parking in the off-street lots, and again, these are public or in one of the parking garages. So it's not a case of, I can't find parking, it's just maybe the parking isn't exactly where I want it to be, but the parking is available. Next slide, please. Now, we looked at, we were specifically asked to look at the use of the reverse angle spaces. And initially, when we looked at that, the use of the overall on-street spaces was much higher than the reverse angle spaces. And when we looked at that, part of the problem that's given us a false sense of that is the reverse angle spaces are generally on Washington and on Seventh Street. And on Seventh Street, 34 of those spaces are, there's 34 spaces, reverse angle, and what we found is only about three of those were occupied at any given time. So only about 10% of the spaces. So that was kind of skewing our results. So we looked at, next slide, please. When we looked, took those out, and we compared the reverse angle spaces essentially along Washington, the use of the spaces is, it's comparable to what we're seeing in others. Now, it's not to say that in every case it's going to be higher, but we did see occasions where it's going to be very close. If it's lower, it's only slightly lower in many conditions. So it, you know, there are some people, you know, reverse angle, it is a new construct. I can tell you, I've been doing this a long time, and there's only one study that I can recall that had reverse angle spaces, that was in Des Moines, Iowa, in their East Village outside the downtown, that was reversed. There may be others, but I don't recall them. It isn't something that we have come across frequently. It is something relatively new, and there are studies saying it is safer.
I have a question on this one particular asset. Did this include cars parked forward in a reverse park? Is this, have you found a reverse park or just?
Is this a car that's using the reverse park correctly? As in they reverse in? Do we count this, people that are pulling in headfirst to reverse park? How does this account for that, those percentages?
It was basically counting occupied spaces. Now, my surveyors were telling me they did notice cars that were parked improperly, you know, and I don't have the specifics of that, but there were cars that were doing that.
So that 75% is just the total spaces being used?
Whether they're parked correctly or not?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. So another one of the specific questions that we were asked to address was the use of the barrier-free spaces. And our inventory found that within the total downtown study area, there are 205 handicap-accessible spaces, both public and private, within the downtown, on-street and off-street in the lots. 72% of those are in the publicly available parking lots. So 28% are in private lots. Now, the number of spaces that are required, that you have to provide is a function of the capacity of the lot. Next slide, please. And what we found was, when we looked at the public lots and garages that are in the core area, you are providing a total of seven spaces more than are required. And this is ADA standards, it's based on the capacity of the lot, generally it's one for every, up to 25 spaces, it's one space, 25 to 50, it's two spaces, and eventually it gets to about 2% of the requirement is the number of handicap-accessible spaces. You are also providing an additional 13 spaces on-street within the core area. Now, the United States Access Board has been talking for a number of years about having a requirement for on-street handicap-accessible spaces, but they have never come up with any regulations to require that. So those 13 spaces that you're providing are in addition. There is no requirement, you're actually providing about 20 spaces more than are required within the downtown core. Outside the core, you're providing about 19 spaces more than are required. I think there's nine spaces in off-street lots and garages that you're exceeding the requirements, and then there's another 10 on-street spaces there that you're exceeding the requirements. So the number of handicap spaces is more than are required. When we look at, next slide, please. When we looked at the utilization, what we found is only about half the spaces, based on our sample, only about half the spaces were occupied at peak time. That's not to say someone who has a space, who has a desire for a space, they may get there and the one or two spaces in that lot are occupied, and it really doesn't do you a whole lot of good if the next space is a block away or in another lot. You know, I have that need, but overall, you are exceeding the requirements for the number of spaces that you have to provide. Next slide, please. One of the other things that we were asked to look at was the MPS system. And data that was provided to us, we were able to go through that data, and we looked at those patrons where no violation was recorded, and we found that their average stay is anywhere from 30 to 60 minutes, meaning they either stayed within the two-hour on-street limit, they paid for the time that they used, or they stayed within the five-minute grace period, or any combination of those. For those who exceeded the grace period, they were staying from 45 to maybe 55 minutes. So they were exceeding the five-minute grace there. Now, the MPS system, one of the unique things about that is, if I pull into a space and I intend to stay for five minutes, and I walk into a business and one of my friends is there, and I end up talking to them, when I go back to my car, I can cure that. I can pay for the time I've used and no foul. It's the same thing if someone pulls into a space, they pay for an hour and a half, and they end up staying an hour and 45 minutes. Before they pull out of that space, they can pay for that additional 15 minutes and no violation is recorded. That's unique. When you think in the traditional meter system, you pull up, you park, you pay for an hour and a half, you come back after an hour and 45 minutes, and the flag is up on the meter or it's flashing and saying, you've committed a violation. You get in your car and go, because the enforcement officer hasn't come by and written you a ticket. You check your windshield, I'm good. In this system, I have to cure that before I leave that space, otherwise the system is going to record me as a violation, it's read my license plate number, and I'm going to get a citation in the mail. So the way we looked at this information, next slide, please, is the data was provided to us, and it listed a number of violations, and if there was a grace period violation, then we counted that, and we looked, we looked at an additional, or an initial four months of data. And then based on that, And then based on that, next slide, please. What we found was about forty-seven percent of the vehicles were committing a violation. Very high. When we, in our initial discussions with the city, with our preliminary report, that was questioned because you're not issuing that many citations. So additional data was provided to us for an additional three months. If you could look at that. And that data, it said, if there was not an officer's name on the sheet next to the citation, next to the violation, no citation was issued. There may have been multiple reasons, the plate couldn't have been read. The first one that you see highlighted there, the grace, it says it was a grace period violation, but the parking duration was five minutes and ten seconds. They were ten seconds past the duration, so no citation was issued. And there may, I, I did notice that there are other ones, they were short violations, and so for some reason, they, they did not issue those, those violations. Next slide, please. So taking the, the additional three months of data that had that detail for us for the number of violations, what we found is those three months, the violation rate was down from forty-seven to thirty-seven percent. And of those that a violation was recorded, only about half of those were actually issued a citation. So about forty-two percent of total interactions committed a violation. Nineteen percent of total interactions were issued a citation. So it, it works out to about half of the violations, I actually get a citation in the mail for committing an infraction. As I mentioned before, you know, I think a lot of this is because if I stay, my time has expired, I can cure that before I leave the space. If I intend to stay for five minutes, I'm going to run in and conduct some business, and then get out before that five minutes, then that, that can be cured. Now, your webpage is a little confusing on that, because on one page, it says, you know, it's not intended, that five minutes is not intended for run-in, run-out. And on another page, it, it says, you know, if you leave within that five-minute period, you're fine. So that is a little, a little confusing. So, the next slide, please. We looked at, one of the questions we were asked is extending that five-minute grace period to fifteen minutes. So what we did is, the, the data in the MPS, MPS system was great, because it gives us a parking duration. So we looked at all those occasions where there was a grace period violation, and we looked at the length of stay. And we counted, okay, if that is less than fifteen minutes, let's don't count that as a violation. So we did that over the, over the seven months of data that we had. And we found that instead of the twenty-five thousand violations that we would have with a five-minute grace period, that would go down to fifteen thousand violations a month with a fifteen-minute grace period violation. And the number of citations would go down to about six thousand, probably about ten thousand five hundred. So there's a reduction in the number of citations that you issued there. Another one of the questions that was asked was the, going from the two-hour to three-hour. I didn't highlight it, but the length of stay of the on-street spaces, it's two-hour time limit, and that is a best practice. On-street spaces, it's best practice, those are limited two hours. You encourage those spaces to turn over, and if someone is going to stay longer, we really want them to park in an off-street lot. People depend on those, on the availability of those convenience spaces for the short-term, high-turnover spaces, which is what we want to encourage. But we were asked to take a look at that, if we went from a, to a three-hour time limit on the, on-street spaces. And we found that the number of violations would drop by about two thousand a month. We'd go from about twenty-eight hundred down to about eight hundred a month. And the number of citations that we'd actually issue would drop by about thirteen hundred. Again, there's different, there's different reasons why you may want to do that. But, but again, I say, you know, best practice is two hours for on-street parking. So with that, next slide, please. We have a number of recommendations. As, as I mentioned, although you have sufficient handicap-accessible spaces, we do recommend that two spaces be added right in front of the post office, which is at the beginnings to where the, the curb ramp is. When you provide spaces, the ADA's, if they can be provided more convenient or along a more accessible path, then it meets the requirement for the, for the spaces. And we think if you put them right there at the beginning of the ramp, rather than half a block away over by the, the one-fifty West Second Street building, that would, that would be beneficial. The reverse angle, you know, there's a lot of, of controversy about that. But, but again, that's a relatively new construct, and I think it's like roundabouts in southeast Michigan. I think, you know, there is, it is taking some getting used to. There are studies, and we cited those in the report, that the time to, to perform a reverse angle is still shorter than a parallel maneuver. And when you pull out of the space, it is safer, because I can see the bicyclists, and I can see cars as opposed to backing out into that spot, and I'm going to be well into the travel lane before I'm going to see any oncoming traffic. The policy that you have now, you charge a higher rate in the evening. We agree with that. I mean, it's, it's like anything, it's supply and demand. The demand is higher, we charge, we charge a higher rate. And you do have the option. I mean, it's, it's, you can park in the garage, and it's seventy-five cents after the first two hours are free. Again, that's, that's another policy we like. We like encouraging the use, you know, of those off-street lots. You know, that's where you want, you want the folks to park. I've, I've worked in communities, and it's kind of priced backwards. The off-street parking is more expensive than the on-street. And I've told the communities, "You're working against yourself, because what are people going to do? They're going to circle the block, looking for those cheap spaces." And, you know, we had a community, they had a parking garage, and you could park on the street for fifty cents, and it costs you a dollar to drive into the garage. And it's just, you know, you wonder why you have the congestion. So you're, you're doing it right. You know, the off-street lots are, are less expensive than the on-street spaces, and I think that's what, that's what you should continue to do. The, the, the time limit, as I said, the two hours is the best practice. The, we think it would probably be beneficial to go to the fifteen-minute grace period. I understand that's, there are some things you'd have to work out with your contractor. But again, you know, it's, the, the length of time that people are staying, for those that are, are committing a violation, is still forty-five to fifty minutes. So you are still going to clear some avenue, even if you do go to that. There will certainly some that will benefit from being able to park, and in the fifty minutes they come in, and it, it doesn't cost them anything. But it is something that we think you should do. We heard, or I heard from my surveyors anecdotally, there was some confusion with some folks trying to understand how to use the parking system. So we think we need some improved marketing there for folks to be able to use the, the meters and what that's going to entail. My surveyors tell me they'd see someone come out, and they're trying to figure out how to do it. They stand there for a few minutes, can't figure it out, get back in the car and leave. Now, you have a lot of the things on the webpage, and maybe we need to make those more prominent for folks to understand that. Again, it's a new system, it's something that, that people are not used to. You know, a lot of folks, it's, I'm used to pulling up to a meter, you know, right next to me, and putting my quarters in, and, and, and being done with it. You know, technology is getting away from that now, it's going to pay stations that handle blocks, and you've got, you know, it's a similar system. So, and then one of the last things we were asked to look at is the, the use of electric vehicle charging stations. There's a lot of missing data on that, I guess, because those stations are expensive and to be able to charge that. And to me, it's a case of, you know, what comes first? Do you put the charging stations in, in order to encourage use, and they may not be used? Or do you wait until you have the level of activity that you need? And that's what we recommend, I think we should monitor the stations that we have now. And as we see those are being used, then perhaps that, at some point in the future, we increase the number of those spaces. So with that. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Burke. Mr. Douglas.
We exceed ADA requirements for the, the number of accessible parking spaces we have. But is that number, a, a, a threshold? In your professional experience, and, and I, I see that they are, you know, on average, about, you know, fifty percent occupied. But I'm, and I'm thinking particularly in terms of convenience, are you, do you have recommendations or ideas or best practices about adding spaces to make them more, not accessible, but adjacent to destinations?
Yeah, the, the way that the, the regulations are written is, you, you have to provide the spaces, the, the number of spaces required in that lot have to be provided. So if a requirement is ten spaces, I've got to provide ten spaces. I don't necessarily have to put them in that lot. And when you look at public parking, those spaces are not, they're not adjacent to a particular use. That's why the private, you know, they have to meet those. But the regulations are such that if I have to provide those ten spaces, if I can provide those along a more accessible path or more convenient, I can do that, and I met those requirements. And for a parking garage, a public parking garage, the requirements are, those spaces just have to be provided closest to the closest pedestrian access into the facility. So.
So we, we could, sorry, go ahead.
To answer your question, I, I think one of the things that, in, in handicap-accessible spaces, you really have to, to listen to the constituents, you know, to the citizens. You know, if they think that, you know, in a particular area, there's not enough, you know, we can certainly add some more. For, the requirements are for a, based on the size of the lot, but for a medical facility, it's ten percent. And if that facility caters to physical therapy or rehab, it's twenty percent of spaces have to be required.
So is that, because you've, you've led right to my next question?
Yeah.
Which is the eleven-mile structure. Is it, are the numbers there predicated on what you've just described? The high percentage of, or potential high percentage of people with physical limitations? Or are the numbers in that structure just the basic ADA number?
The, the numbers in that structure is based on the capacity of the garage.
Ah. So did you, did you collect data of, I mean, did you isolate usage of blue spaces in that structure? I mean, we know that across the board, it was forty to fifty percent.
No, because the, the utilization of the parking garages was provided to us by the city on, on the days, on the days that we did the surveys. So I'm, I'm sure that data, you know, is available, but that was both, both, we did not conduct fiscal counts in the garages.
So, yeah, I will just say, Mr. Burke, as we go forward with all of this, we have a very good relationship with the Henry Ford Management, Building Management there. And I'm, and I'm a patient there, so people talk to me about this. And I would just like to make sure that we are meeting that demand for those accessible spaces. Thank you.
And just on that note, well, maybe not on that exact note. We've had some discussion, I know communities to the north have done some things differently, but, you know, there's a standard design for a accessible parking spot, right? And you have the ability for the wheelchair to get out and all of that. There's this idea, and it was actually brought to my attention from a person that had a walker. They didn't have a wheelchair. And they said, you know, and this is their words, not, not mine, that like, somebody in a wheelchair can actually be more mobile than somebody in a walker, meaning that they can park in a garage, and they can use their wheelchair to get to where they need to go, or they can park in a, a spot designed where they can get out and move. But somebody with a walker may, you know, may not need all of that extra space, but could, could definitely use a painted blue spot if they have, you know, knee issues or, or mobility issues that don't necessarily confine them to a chair. Is there anything in your expertise that we should consider in terms of our numbers of parking for accessible parking, but also type?
If I understand your question, the, if, if you have a designated handicap space, the standards are, it has to meet these, these requirements. Spaces, if they're on the street, they have not come up with those standards. That can be a space. We have worked in communities, and we've recommended that those spaces are probably a little bit longer. You certainly have to have the curb cut there. We worked in, in Midland a couple of years ago, and they had a number of handicap spaces on the street. But part of the problem they had is they'd have a sign right next to where the door was, you know, you pull into a spot, it was a nice long spot, but the door was, you couldn't open, you couldn't open the passenger door. And we said, you know, if you're going to have those spaces, at least make them, you know, they have to be functional. And, you know, they're, they actually don't have curbs. Everything is, it's all sloped right, right to the roadway. And so it, it worked out fantastic, what, what they were doing. But I agree with you, yeah, the walker is, is something, you know, being able to pick that up over the curb would, would be a problem. You'd have to have a, you know, sufficient curb cut right there.
But there, but there, well, maybe it's a discussion for another time. We were just, because we know in other communities, maybe they're, I don't want to say more like expectant mother, but they're designated, they're not fully advertised as handicap-accessible, but rather they're sort of a, you know, mobility-limited spaces or something like that. Because when I think of someone like my father, you know, who's had two knee surgeries and everything, and, you know, he can, you know, you make a walking path for him to get up, you know, you get rid of the curb, but he doesn't need, you know, two, the equivalent of two spots to get in. Because he doesn't have a chair, he just can't walk more than a block without having to take a break.
Yeah, the ADA is very specific on their accessible paths as well, so.
Mr. Macy.
So I just want to follow up real quickly on that question, that was first of my questions, too. So you did recommend adding two handicap spaces in front of the post office. So what the mayor was just asking about, I think, was what that would look like. I heard you say curb cut. How would we need to change what's there right now? Because it's not a double-wide or anything space, it's a parallel space with, how would that, how would it look?
What you would have, what you would have to do is, those spaces, I didn't, I didn't measure them. A typical on-street space is twenty-two to perhaps twenty-three feet long. Those spaces, we've seen those spaces, they're, they're just designated as handicap parking. What you would have to do is, you would have to remove the curb so that it is, there is a accessible path there, so that they can get out of the car, pull the wheelchair out, and be able to get up a wheelchair or a walker if you're going to designate a handicap space.
Okay, and I think I just heard you say that there actually are no requirements. There's no, like, to call it?
There, there is, there is no on-street parking requirement. I'm just saying, in order to be functional, I think that's what's.
So I got you, but I just want to say, you could call it. The mayor is saying we could call it, you know, for mobility, but we could call it handicap accessible, and then there would be, we wouldn't be violating.
You could put a sign, handicap accessible.
Okay, so that's, my first question was about that. My next is about, so the reverse angle parking. So, you know, in the report, you talk about how it's safer, and there's some studies that show that it's safer. And that is, of course, consistent with the system, the parking system that we have now, because there's no front plates on Michigan cars, and there's a camera that is, that is reading the plate. So that's what the backend is for. I, I'm just wondering if those, if the studies of reverse angle parking, which you said is new, and, I mean, it is new, although it's now been here for a year, if, if the studies are in places, are in situations similar to what we have on Washington Street, which is a single lane of traffic going both ways in reverse angle on both sides, is that a typical setup that you, where the studies have been done, or is that more unusual?
The reverse angle, I think, I'm not sort of SEMCOG, but one of the things that if you're going to have reverse angle parking, they have that there is maximum traffic volumes because of the, of the congestion. And I believe that's ten to twelve thousand cars per day. In the study, we looked at, and SEMCOG did provide some, some counts, average, average annual daily traffic. And they did have data for Washington Street. And I think there, the maximum volume was about eight thousand vehicles a day. It was below the threshold. And, you know, so Main Street wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't want that because of the number of vehicles that it had on Main Street. And they didn't have every, every street, but they did have several, and so you were below the threshold for that.
Okay, that, that's interesting. That's, wasn't even where I was sort of going. It's just, when I've seen this in other communities, it's usually a one-way street where it has reverse angle parking. So I'm just wondering if the studies have been similarly done on two-way streets with one lane of traffic, where when someone is stopped, you either have to wait for them, or you have to go into the other lane against traffic to get around them?
And, and when you think of it, there's many communities that it's, the, the parallel spaces is exactly that. I've got a, I've got a parked drive aisle, and then I've got a through lane. And in order to do that maneuver for someone doing the parallel spaces, it's going to take longer. And we actually cited in the study, I think the, the parallels is like thirty, thirty-five seconds, and the reverse angle is about twenty seconds.
Right, I saw that. Right, I saw that. But, but I guess what I'm getting at is the safety studies. So one of the things that's being sold, we're being sold, is that the reverse angle is safer. And I'm just wondering if we have seen studies like of this situation, or are we looking at different situations and comparing them to this because it simply has reverse angle?
It's, the studies that I've seen have not been very specific on a particular count.
Okay, that's one question. And then, so I heard you saying about the ADA when Commissioner Douglas was asking, that we, we should listen to what the citizens are asking for. And we're pretty clearly hearing what the citizens are asking for with reverse angle parking and what the businesses are asking for with reverse angle parking. And I wonder if, like, that's something that we, you would consider that we should take into account when looking at our overall parking system, is the level of discontent and how people are able to navigate the system in terms of keeping it?
You know, one of the things is that the parking really has to work with the community. And, you know, as I said, reverse angle, it is still relatively new. To me, it is, it should, it should not be a difficult parking maneuver. When you think of it, yes, it takes longer to get into the space. But when you think of it, to get out of that space, if I'm backing out, I've got to do that very cautiously, you know, because I can't see. Whereas if reverse angle, you know, I can pull out a little bit and I can see that there's not a bicyclist coming or there isn't a car, and I can pull out. So my exit from the space is going to be much quicker.
Well, it's no argument there, no argument there, although some people are still doing it incorrectly, and those people have to back out across two lanes of traffic in order to get where they're going. Poison is dangerous.
And we actually cited in the report, that does create issues, and we think that there should be, and I think you're already doing it, there should be an additional fine for improper parking. Because someone, you know, is backing out where you expect that they're going to see you and they don't. And, you know, you're coming down the road and that's going to create a possible collision.
Enforcement of that parking would have to be done by person, right? Like the, the system itself won't accommodate that as it is right now.
I'm sorry.
So that, what you just said, an additional fine for people who do it incorrectly park in, that would have to be done by an enforcement officer, right? It couldn't be done by the system. Okay, and then more, one more on the reverse angle parking. Again, back to the ADA, is reverse angle parking, then they back up, and then there's a little pull there that has the light on it. So for the ones that are accessible or not, it's a challenge to get in, you can't get into the trunk easily from there. And I wonder if that's a consideration at all in terms of how those spots are supposed to work? Should we be configuring them differently, or do they even, does the system with the reverse angle even work for accessible spots?
The ADA standards say there are no restrictions on drive straight in, reverse angle parking for handicap accessible spaces. I agree with you, you know, if that.
The challenges.
Post is right, is right there, and it's making an accident because I can't get out of my walker, I can't get out of my wheelchair, that certainly is a problem. But, you know, there may be ways that you can, you can work around that.
Okay. And then about, so parking, parking limits, it's just a random question, because I couldn't get it out of my head when you said, if there's 25,000 of those, you know, don't pay, don't pay anything violations, and the average is 45 minutes, how can it be that 10,000 of them are fewer than 15 minutes? I'm trying to do the averages in my head, and it seems like more than.
No, what, what we did was there's.
Do you mean the mode is?
25,000 violations of a five-minute grace period. The data showed us that, how long those parking durations were. So we looked and says, okay, if that, I got flagged for a parking violation or for a grace period violation. We looked at the duration and said, what if we said, if that was 15 minutes, then some of those are going to go away because they've been there less than 15 minutes. And what that does is that knocks about 10,000 violations off of that 25. Because they got, they got a violation, but they got reported as a, as a five-minute violation. We said 15, 10,000 of those were.
Okay. But, but you, you didn't do the math then, right? You looked at the whole 25,000 and found that the average time that people were there for the non-pay was 45 minutes?
We looked at the, we looked at the statistics of the data provided to us. And at each month, it said there was a grace period violation, we recorded that, and then we recorded how long that violation was, or how long they were staying. And then when we totaled everything up and got an average per violation, it was about 35 or 45 to 50 minutes. It's those that were recorded with a grace period violation were staying about 45 to 50 minutes. Now, and again, they could have cured those.
Right, yes, I understand. I think I understand the situation, just the math is confusing me, but you know what? I trust, I trust the numbers. So the real question I have about that is, so you talked about the two-hour limit being the, kind of the gold standard for on-street parking, which I think is well-understood and has been discussed at this table many times as we, as we've looked at that. And the reason for that is to have this turnover that encourages people to come and go. But I wondered if the standard is, if there, if there is any kind of a shifting standard for based on the size of the city and the number of overall violations? Like for instance, Chicago, you know, you're driving around trying to find a spot forever, but in Royal Oak, if we have, if only half of our spots are occupied at any one time, do we need to have this, this turnover-friendly two-hours in place?
Well, you know, the thing about Royal Oak though, is you have the capacity in off-street lots or in the garages. So if someone is going, the on-street capacity is there, as I said, there are probably blocks, I can go back to the data and see, there are probably block spaces that would be 80 or 90% occupied or even 100% occupied at certain times of the day. Overall, you were, you were less than that. And the cars that are, if they're going to stay for longer than two hours, we really would prefer that those folks park in an off-street lot or in one of the garages. And when you think about that, you know, to park in an on-street space at peak time is going to be $1.25 an hour, $3.75. I can go park in a garage and stay for that same three hours and it costs me 75 cents. You pay for the convenience. And, you know, that's not to say every community that I've worked in has had a two-hour limit. I've seen three hours and four hours. But best practice is, is you limit that to two hours. And some of that is because I want to discourage abuse by employees. And I understand that's not really the condition that you have here, but I've seen it in communities, employees call it two-hour shuffle. Because every two hours they go up, they've got, they've got to move your spot. And that's another thing we, we want to discourage. I mean, your webpages tell you, you have to move your cars to two hours. Well, if they're going to take that space, they're moving that space and they're moving into another space, they're still taking a space away from a customer who could, who could take advantage of that convenient space. I would really prefer that those folks, rather than just move to another spot and start on a two-hour, put it in an off-street lot or a garage.
Yeah. Well, the good news is that those people who are driving in, pretty unlikely to have looked at the webpage before they came to park in Royal Oak, because they probably didn't even see that. Which is, I think, another concern I have about some of the marketing you talk about, like the fact that the suggestions, some of the suggestions include putting more information on our website. It just, it feels to me like asking the people who visit Royal Oak, residents or not, to check out our website before they come here. I mean, it should all be there on the system.
But some of that is new. And I understand you have ambassadors or, you know, some communities have ambassadors to help people get used to it. As I said before, you know, the use of roundabouts in this, this partial portion of the country, you know, it's new. And, you know, people, you know, even they put some, where I live, in a first, I was thinking, oh my gosh, that's going to be a giant pain. And now I love it because that traffic does not back up and you can really get through there much quicker as opposed to waiting for, you know, a 90-second traffic light. So I think the same thing is that reverse angle, yeah, it is, you know, there are some getting used to with that. But I think we have, we have to get that sometime.
Okay. Yeah, those roundabouts, that'll be our next battle we'll be having here. So one more thing, and if you said this during the presentation just now, I'm sorry if I missed it, but it's in the report, so I just wanted to hear you speak a little bit about the look of the pay stations and how it's a little bit confusing and some of the suggestions you had about that.
That, it's one of the things I heard from, from my surveyors. They, they said people would get out and they didn't understand what they needed to do. And, you know, you really, parking really is supposed to be a non-event. I shouldn't really have to, you know, worry about what I'm going to do. It ought to be very clear, that's a pay station, okay, I have to pay for my parking, that's where I go and do it. I enter my license plate number and I put my credit card in, and I tell it how long I want to park. And, you know, really should be very, very simple to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Collo.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, just before I get to my questions, I just want to clarify that. Just to be clear, your surveyors who've been in hundreds of communities, I presume, found our pay stations to be unintuitive and hard to use?
It's just anecdotal data that they, they provided me. They would be doing their surveys and they would see someone who would get out of their car and did not understand what they were, what they were supposed to do. They didn't understand that they were supposed to go to the pay station because they thought, if I walk up to that pay station, I'm actually paying for somebody else's vehicle and not my own.
Yeah.
One of our vice presidents, his wife, she actually, she was down here for some reason. She didn't, I mean, she's a very bright woman. She didn't figure out what she had to do, got back in her car, left, and he says, a week later, they got a citation in the mail.
And she's married to someone who surveys parking systems for a living. Okay, that's, that's interesting. So, so, you know, looking at the report as a whole, I first have a question about spaces. You have done, have, did you work on the Royal Oak project in the past when this survey was completed?
No.
So we've completed the survey in 2018 and previously in 2005. In terms of parking spaces, do we have more or less spaces than back in 18?
I was, I was actually looking at that this afternoon. In the 2018 study, we included the spaces that are in the parking garage next to the Imagine Theater, there's 400 spaces in that. We didn't include those, and that was, and so I was trying to, to compare, you know, apples to apples, and I went on a block-by-block basis. And when I did that and I took out those 400 spaces up there, you've got more spaces on this block, or a different number of spaces on this spot. We had the 11-mile structure, which we didn't have in 2018. I think the difference was about 160 fewer spaces in our inventory today than what we had in 2018.
But doesn't this report say it's a positive increase of 784 spaces? According to Table 5 of your report, right?
I have to look at that.
Yeah. So, and maybe that fits it back in, but the report on page 40 says that we had gained 784 spaces through the use of additional parking garages throughout the city.
It probably was. When I was looking, there wasn't a table in 2018, and I'm trying to look at a, at a small magnitude, so I probably was.
So, you know, looking at that and kind of back to what Commissioner Mees was asking about, we look at the 75% utilization rate of the system. If we have almost 800 more spaces than we did back, you know, three, four years ago, and then at any given time, only 75% are utilized, if we did move to a three-hour configuration, there would still theoretically be spaces available at most times of the day, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's those, those same parkers. It's all I'm doing is if I'm, if I'm making that a three-hour space, I'm just giving them permission. That person may have been in an off-street lot, now they can park on the street for that three hours.
So, but we wouldn't hit a capacity by any means if we just moved to three hours. We would still have the capacity because we have extra space within the capacity right now.
Yeah. And again, the only, the only caution I make is what we've seen in some other communities. If the on-street spaces become twofold, and if I have cars staying there for three hours, someone going down the street, perception is, is there's no place to park. Normally you want to price parking, and again, that's the best practice, so that about 85% of the spaces are occupied.
Yeah. So actually, I looked at the 2005 study that Rich Associates completed, and it's remarkably similar to what we see now, where in 2005, when we had three-hour meter parking, 86% of people stayed for two hours or less. And that is, you know, now we're at 92. But people were staying, who stayed between two and four hours, that makes it up to 99, and it's almost the same as, as now, right?
One of the things I, I want to caution you on that though, is when, the way we do the studies without the MPS system, is we, we drive down the road, we record a portion of the license plate number, we come by again in two hours, and it's that same vehicle there. The MPS system is recording that individual, individual space and for that, for that exact period of time. So in that two hours a week, three more cars may have parked in that spot.
Yeah.
But ours is looking at, I don't know, every two hours. It's just, it's just the way we, we do our studies.
So, you know, looking at studies, you know, how many studies have you been part of, would you, do you think?
Several hundred. I've been doing this for more than 40 years.
Have you ever seen a citation rate that's close to ours?
No, but a caution, that 77% of your violations are exceeding that five-minute grace period. I mean, that's a high proportion of your, your total violations, your total citations. As I said before, what happens in a lot of communities is, I, I'm going to stay for, I pay for 90 minutes, and I come back after almost two hours. Enforcement officer hasn't come by, I don't have a citation on my window, I'm good. No harm, no foul. With this system, if I leave that space without having, paying, without paying for those additional 15 minutes, you've recorded that as a violation. I'm not getting away this time. Now, as I said, I can cure that, but I have, I have to know that I can do that. And so that's why I think that's contributing to the high violation rate that, that we're seeing. Because it's like having a parking enforcement officer basically at every stall, which other communities you don't have. That enforcement officer may come by once or twice a day.
So I guess my question is, the citation rate is not a best practice then within the parking, parking.
No, it's a high, and I, I think I said it in the report, you get a high, by, high violation rate, and it's life of the disenfranchised, you know, some, some people, because, you know, I may, you know, I'm going to say, oh, I got a parking ticket when I went into, into Royal Oak.
Yeah. So a citation rate this high is likely to have a negative impact on a community, on the businesses.
I'm sorry?
A citation rate this high is likely to have a negative impact on a community, the businesses and the people that use it, right?
But, but again, the number of citations, a good portion of those have five-minute grace period violations. Your time expired and the other violations, I think that's about 5,000 violations total between those two.
So what would be a best practice to lower the citation rate?
As I, I think one thing would be to extend the grace period to 15 minutes. I think we need to communicate to people that if you pay for a certain amount of time or you expect, you, that grace period, you need to cure that before you leave that space. Maybe people don't understand that, because in traditional spaces, as I said, if I get there and the enforcement officer hasn't been there, you know, people don't walk up and put an extra 20 cents or 50 cents in the meter, you know, because it's, it's got the flag up or it's a violation. In traditional systems, here, I have to cure that, otherwise I'm going to get a citation.
Yeah.
So there's, there's things that I think we can do in order to lower that, that rate. And as I, you know, if, if you exclude that, that five-minute grace period violation, because what you normally find in that is in a controlled lot or a garage. You know, you pull a ticket, you drive in, and if you get out within the grace period, you know, you put your ticket in at the exit thing and it throws the gate open and you drive out. You know, here, you know, I have that five minutes and it's supposed to be, I have that to pay for my, pay for my parking. And if I don't, it's going to, it's going to ding me, it's going to record that.
Okay, that's all. I'll let some of my colleagues go on. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a clarification maybe for Chief Moore. And I know you don't have this data readily available, but what is our?
Violation rate inside our parking garages. I imagine it's got to be pretty close to zero as a percentage of parking events in our garages, or really low, single digits.
It's, it's low, Mr. Mayor, but I don't have those exact numbers in front of me this evening.
Yeah, because I mean, one thing, we, we focus on the meters, but we have 5,700 parking spots in the city of Royal Oak and many parking garages conveniently located in the downtown. And we have, you know, approximately 700 that are under the MPS system, which, you know, I think we're looking at and trying to, to make it work here. But that means that there's 5,000 parking spots in the city of Royal Oak to come and see our businesses and go to the hair salon and enjoy our restaurants and have covered parking in the winter and shaded parking in the summer. But we're talking about the metered parking mostly that we're focusing on. I just want to make sure that, you know, from a parking garage point of view, which is a bulk of our parking in downtown Royal Oak, that's very convenient for people to come and visit us in, you know, there are some, we're overparked, not overparked, but we have the right amount, if not maybe some changes on the 11-mile with ADA. And those seem to be working pretty well in your opinion, the garages? I mean, we're set up from a technological point of view, they're, they're, you know, your feedback on, on at least the 5,000 of the 5,700 parking spots, what's your, what's your feedback on those garages?
Well, yeah, as I said, you, you have the capacity. I did work a few years ago, and they had similar conditions to you. This was in the Chicago area. And. And the evening was just, we did, we did counts there throughout the day, basically every hour from 5:00 in the morning until, um, 1:00 in the morning. So, they were, they were constant. And what we found is, starting about 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the evening, people were coming down for the restaurants and the entertainment offerings, and the on-street spaces were full, more than full, because people would squeeze into, into spaces at the end of blocks and, 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 again, it's fire hydrants and everything else where they get a spot. Because, and, and in that condition as well, the garages, there were four garages in that downtown, and three of them, excuse me, two of them were in what we would call the, the core area, and they were packed. People happened to, we went into those every hour, and you had to circulate all the way to the top level of the garage, um, where you might find a spot, um, and you might not. And they actually put in a system to tell you how full that garage was, so the people were upset, they would drive all the way to the top and then find out it was full. You have the capacity, and I think it's just a matter of encouraging people that those garages, they're there, they're convenient, they're safe.
And, and do you see a wayfinding issue at all with our parking garages and anywhere in your study? Like ensuring that people know where to get to them and how to get to them?
Um, we didn't specifically look at signage. Um, it, it is one of the things that, um, we do recommend in a lot of communities, however, that you have to, uh, direct people to where the, the parking is. Um, and I, I said, I can't specifically say whether I, I've, I've seen specific signs for that. I, I've worked in some communities and it's, and it's great, you know, you've got, you've got to temper that, you know, you don't want a, a signage jungle out there, but you really need to direct people to where the public parking is, and, um, you know, the, the, A is it is public parking, it's opposed to private parking, and to navigate to those spaces.
'Cause I, I'm completely biased, I mean, we live in this town, we're there all, like, we, we know where everything is, so it's hard to know how somebody that isn't as familiar with our downtown would, would have that wayfinding, that's why I ask. Um, Commissioner Hunt?
I just have two quick questions for clarification. Um, one of your recommendations was to discourage that, what you call parking shuffle. Did your surveyor see any incidents of that, or was it just, it was viewed on the website, don't do it, and there was just a continued recommendation of not to do it?
No, we, I, I didn't, I didn't see any, I didn't specifically look for it, to tell you the truth. Um, I, I have done studies where we, we heard that, um, but we heard that it was not an issue with employees parking on the street here, and that's where you generally see it.
And the second was, um, you stated that, you know, once you get above the five-minute grace period, say five minutes and two seconds, those violations weren't going out. I would assume around six or seven minutes, they would be going out. Do, did you gauge where that cutoff was?
Um, no, it's all we did was, we looked at the, I mean, the, the MPS system, it's programmed for five minutes.
Yeah.
And it records like that year duration. It is, I, I, I think it's someone in the police department that is making that determination as to what that is. As I said, there was one, it was five minutes and 10 seconds, no violation was written. I did see some other ones that were short duration, no violation was written, but I didn't know if there was a specific criteria.
From the review of the data, you can get a gauge of, estimate, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one other question, I don't know if it would even be possible to get it, but did you get any sort of plate data or at least identifying data that would suggest that, you know, people getting tickets are, you know, one and done, and they never come back? Or are they people that, you know, pay for parking right five times and then one time they didn't? Or is it, you know, somebody got a ticket and then got five more tickets before they realized that tickets don't show up on their windshield, that it's actually mailed to their home? Um, did you get any sort of, uh, analysis or any sort of, uh, plate data that would help you with that analysis?
We, we didn't, but I, that data, I think, is in the MPS system because it does list the tag number. So, you could do a search of that, of that data table and go through and find, you know, those folks, you know, did, how many, you know, did they show up again? You know, it would be a, quite an involved search, I would, you know, doing that over a period of time, but the data, I think, is there.
Yeah, and it'd be interesting, too, to even go further and see, are they Royal Oak people, know how to use it, like frequent visitors, people that work and live here versus outsiders, like somebody from Ohio, you know, visiting in town? Um, so it'd be really interesting to see the difference there. Um, okay, so it didn't go that deep. I know you wouldn't have presented it all, but I'm just wondering if the dataset had that deep. Uh, Commissioner Macy?
Just to follow up with what the mayor was saying right there about, I was stealing this from someone else who said this before, Commissioner Douglas, about the system in Royal Oak in terms of trying to get the marketing out there and trying to get the awareness out there, how impactful that will be when we anticipate that many of our people coming to park here aren't coming every week, that they're not residents of Royal Oak, they're coming from not just Ohio, but, you know, Farndale and Berkeley and Detroit and, you know?
Forever New York.
Just all, non-Royal Oakers having to learn a specific system in Royal Oak, um, and expecting, learning to expect that they're gonna get a ticket in the mail just for the city, is that, is that reasonable?
I was just trying to hear.
Well, so, the, I, I, one of the things you recommend is that we should do a better job of explaining how this system works, right? And I'm just wondering how it, how effective that can be, like, when we're trying to disperse that information, not just to Royal Oakers, but to all the people who are coming to visit Royal Oak, when we have so many people from outside Royal Oak who are coming every week? Like, is that?
And, and just to add to that point, what she said, too, is that our system is unique, that it's 100% camera enforced, and that you're not gonna get a ticket on your windscreen. It's going to be mailed to you, which is different from every other community around here, and I imagine pretty different than, you know, a majority of communities, so therefore, you know, it's still people's responsibility if they're gonna play the game, they just don't know that the odds are 100% against them if they're gonna risk it, but to her point.
Yeah, um, and, and, I mean, that, that's the difficulty of this, as I said, it's, you know, I'm, I'm used to, you know, hey, if I committed a violation, you know, there's a, there's, I, I'm, I'm, I know I'm a windshield, you know. Here, I don't know until a week later, and if, for someone unfamiliar with the system, you know, they're, they're not clear that, you know, I stayed for a little bit longer, I had, I enjoyed Royal Oak, you know, I was with friends, we had a nice, at the restaurant, I came out, you know, I expected to be for an hour and a half, and I was here for almost two hours, you know. They have to understand that they could cure that, and, you know, we have to be able to get that message out to, to those people. Um, now, I've worked, I've, in communities, you know, maybe it's more ambassadors on the street, you know, that, parking ambassador, I've seen this in communities. Um, you know, we did work in, um, uh, again, it was in, um, it was a resort community in the Chicago area, I can't think of the name. They had parking ambassadors that are out to tell people, because they, they went to new pay stations, and to help people, you know, how to operate those and what they, what they had to do, you know. Maybe that's something for a period of time we're gonna have to consider.
I would just, you know, we did have ambassadors when the, when the system was introduced, but I, I mean, your point is taken, I'm.
We still have them. We still have people walking around the city, two at a time, and all these issues persist. Yeah, and I'll just, I mean, make a couple remarks here, too. I mean, certainly, what I garner a lot of attention is given to the minority of the meters that we have in town, and that those meters are designed for really convenient parking. The system was put in place to help people cure, to help people use an app, um, and to make it easier so they could, you know, do their business in Royal Oak at the meters. A vast majority of our spots are conveniently located, safe, in nice garages all around town, which should be the primary use for most people staying here for any extended period of time. You'll never get a ticket, it's less expensive, and your car's covered in winter and in summer, which is a great thing. Um, but some of the data we see here today has been really helpful, and I appreciate the work Rich and Associates have done. This has given me personally and this commission a lot to, uh, process and digest and think about. Um, I think it, you know, from our point of view, we don't want to be in the business of giving violations, we want to be in the business of, you know, making sure we have turnover with our meters. Uh, that way, the businesses succeed, people looking for spots, you know, it's not just the business owners, it's somebody that wants their precious item at a retail store or their favorite sandwich at a sandwich shop, they want to get in there without having to search for, for parking, and, and, you know, as a historical fact, um, before this system was in place, people, probably the number one complaint, too, you know, hey, this guy gave me a ticket and I was only there for five minutes. I mean, we've seen it, although it was more manual, now it's more automated. Uh, I concede, and I agree, that there are things we need to work on with this, and, and this is really helpful. I think the, the fact that, um, compliance isn't at the 75 to 90% means there's something at issue in the user interface, the system, something that, you know, people aren't taking advantage of all these convenient measures, uh, that we were promised would get us to a 75 to 90%. Why do we want that 75 to 90%? Because we want the circulation, we want the businesses to succeed, we want people here to succeed, finding a spot if they're just grabbing something or staying for a short period of time. Um, so there's definitely a lot of work that needs to be done there, and I think this data is the first indication, uh, you know, where we need to hunt. Um, and I think I have a whole list of notes I, I have down here for the city manager to take a look at and, and hunt even further with the cooperation of MPS, um, to, to figure out exactly, um, how we get that compliance up, because more compliance means less tickets and everybody's happy.
Exactly.
Um, and, um, yeah, so, again, I want to underscore that, you know, we have 5,700 spaces in our downtown, our core town, 5,000 are ticket-free, you'll never get a ticket if you leave and go, you pay at the gate, your car will be snow-free, rain-free, and, you know, won't be baking in the summer. Uh, but for these ones, for these convenience spots, we need to, you know, um, we have some more information that we can definitely, uh, dig into here, so I appreciate Rich and Associates going through the effort of breaking it down the way you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Collo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, adding to what you said, uh, I think this report has, uh, been illuminating to us, and it has showed us a lot. Um, the good, uh, that we do, like, as you point out, with the parking structures that we have and how convenient they are, um, and I think it's also exposed issues within the system, and I think those have been evident tonight. Um, and those are issues we need to resolve, we, we need to resolve them and rather quickly at this point. Um, so right now, I move that redirect, uh, the city manager to work with municipal parking services to, uh, come up with solutions as outlined, uh, in this report and best recommendations, and to bring a recommendation to us, um, at, in one month from today, or the second meeting in February.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion. Commissioner Dubak?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I really appreciate this report, I think it's, it's just kind of quantified, uh, what we've been hearing anecdotal, which is, um, you know, when we, uh, moved to, to adopt this system, the promise was really that it was gonna make it easier to park, easier to pay, and easier to not get a ticket, and right now, it's falling woefully short on all three of those promises. Um, so, I appreciate the motion because we need to take quick action to course correct how this is landing, because the only thing that it's doing right now is writing a ton of tickets, and this was never about generating more revenue, this is about making it easier to visit Royal Oak and easier to be compliant, and, uh, we have gone completely the opposite direction with this, so. Uh, I think the data makes that quite clear, and I appreciate, uh, staff, uh, taking some quick action on finding some resolutions on this. Thank you.
I'd also like to just say to staff, as part of this motion, I mean, but you use your discretion, that I think involving our, um, small business community and making sure that they see these recommendations and that they have input and involvement on this as well, and if you want to take that step to have Mr. Hill actually, you know, summarize the recommendations, the reasons why, and get some, you know, surveyed feedback, I think that would be helpful as well, um, to see, you know, like, like Mr. Burr said, it's not just, you know, the data and information, it's also about, you know, what the community needs are as well. Uh, I'll go with Commissioner Perush, then Commissioner Macy.
I, I just have some feedback, thoughts. Um, first of all, thank you very much for this work, it's very, very, very helpful. Um, when there is this much raw data in the charts, my eyes tend to glaze over, you know, I'm not really good with statistics, but you, you condense it in such a way so that it's, it's readable, it's usable, it's manageable, and, um, and that's not true for every kind of report that we get that deals with the same kind of data, so I really appreciate that, uh, for people of us who are not into math. Um, the second thing is, I can recall when we were discussing the system early on, before we actually signed a contract with MPS, one of the things that the proponents of the system were selling us on the, the system was that there was a high percentage of people in the old system in Royal Oak who just never paid for parking. They just took the gamble that they were gonna park and not put any money in the meter and get, get out of there before the parking enforcement officer came around and gave them a ticket, or they, they went ahead and put enough coins in the meter so that they were just ahead of the parking enforcement officer. So, there was a high percentage of non-compliance with the parking system, and so, one of the reasons why the proponents of this system were enthusiastic about it was, you people are not gonna get away with not paying for the system, and we found that to be true. They're, they're getting hundreds of, well, not hundreds, they're getting tens of thousands of tickets, and it's, so it's creating, um, we're solving one problem, people are actually paying one way or another for the time they put in the spaces, but that we're generating all this ill will at the same time. So, it's an unintended consequence, and it's that unintended consequence that we have to solve, um, because we are generally getting the revenue, more revenue than we expected to get because of this new system, because people are paying one way or another, they're either paying it at the meter or they're paying it through the ticket. Um, but they're, we're generating so much ill will by doing it this way that we've gotta figure out solutions, um, so that we actually generate the revenue that we need, which is appropriate, um, but that we don't generate this, this huge negative backlash at the same time, so there's gotta be a way out of that somehow. So, it's, it's gonna be a challenge, it's gonna be a real challenge to find those solutions, but that's what we're gonna have to do. So, again, thank you for the data, this is very, very helpful, and, and hopefully, it'll lead to some, um, good stuff.
It reminds me, when we were talking about this in the first place, that I was always of the theory that nobody besides the police wants 100% enforcement, you know? People, people like the spice of life where they pull into a parking lot and the parking spot and then they get away five minutes later, six minutes later, um, which they can't do anymore, but regardless, I was just gonna, Commissioner Dubak, when you, we were talking, I remember when we were discussing the parking system, it wasn't even MPS, it was something before that, and your question for, for the presenter, and I think it was Rich and Associates at the time, was, how is this gonna make parking better for people in Royal Oak? Like, that's what we're trying to do, we're not trying to use this as our major revenue collector, we're trying to improve the experience of people coming here to Royal Oak, and it feels like there's a lot to be done right now. So, anyway, I just want to add into the thanks on this report and then give you a call, a call back to Commissioner Dubak who set us on, who set us on the path.
Commissioner Douglas?
As others have said here, it's important for the system to be, um, say, as you've said, it's important for the system to be safe, um, and to be fair, and I am glad to see your recommendation about people who are parking head-in into the reverse angle spaces as someone who almost got clipped by somebody backing out of one of those, backing across two lanes of traffic. Um, I mean, not only are they endangering people who are passing by, but they are, to me, they are thumbing their nose at the city. They know those can't be enforced, um, and we talk about, you know, Scott laws, uh, those are the people who I think are cheating the people of Royal Oak by parking in that fashion. Um, and so, I appreciate your recommendation that we've caught, you know, pay particular attention to, to those folks. Thank you.
We don't want to have necessarily a better system, we want to have the best system, and we've certainly fallen short of that. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, training people to the system, I really think we need to consider training the system to the people, and I think that's gonna be the big task here. The basic elements and tools are there, the basic policies are there, we're doing a lot of things right in the study, we're falling short on that interface, that human being that's coming up and is getting a violation for some reason, and we have to understand why. We have to understand exactly why those people are getting the violation. Did they forget? Did they not pay? Who's getting the violations? Are they all going to UPS drivers, or are they all going to, you know, people like my dad? Um, we have to understand that, we have to break, break this down, and this, this is really gonna help us, and I think staff is going to bring us back something, um, and do the work and do the study and work with MPS to find out what we can do, because, as everyone said here, we want park lit, parking to be seamless, and our garages, 5,000 parking spots, conveniently located, you park there, you're, you're almost 100% unlikely to get a ticket. almost 100% unlikely to get a ticket. And a lot of people do that in day out. These small number of 700 spaces are driving so many problems right now in our community. And we've been trying to fix it, and now we have some really good information to act on. And we gotta make some, we gotta make some progress, folks. So I'm supporting this motion 100%. All right, any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Burr.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes?
So we have a memo from staff proposing two possible resolutions. One is that we take no action regarding this report until we hear from the DDA. The other is that we direct the city manager to implement the plan. Do we need to choose from one of those options?
I think we made a third option.
Hmm?
I think we made up our own third option there.
I, I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me that that was a response to the two options that we had here. I mean, what you, what, the motion that we passed could be different from what we see on paper, or am I overthinking this?
Let me pose it this way, rather than, than doing a motion, as one of the speakers suggested during public comment, to work with the DDA. As long as there's a universal understanding of what feedback that the DDA will, will give, that'll be in a subsequent recommendation. I, I just simply included this so there was some form of action to, to begin the discussion. But Commissioner Collo is right, he's, he came up with a third solution. But, but along those lines, as long as there's a universal understanding that the DDA is going to have some thoughtful discussions through their committees and that we're open to their suggestions and, and what was discussed before of listening really to the stakeholders and the merchants and the, the folks that, that really have much at stake here.
Okay.
So, so no motion is necessary.
Thank you.
You spent too much time on the planning commission where you guys have to choose A or B.
All right. Any other questions? All right, that brings us to item nine, which is the Planning Commission Recommendation Zoning Ordinance Amendments Establishment Service of Alcohol Second Reading. Mr. Twain, what's happening? How are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the second reading of a zoning ordinance text amendment that you saw in first reading back in December of 2022. The resolution at that time was passed unanimously. This is primarily amendments dealing with how we process establishments that have alcoholic beverage licenses or are attempting to get them. Anything to add to my presentation from back then, unless you would like me to go through it again? But it's second reading on, on how we're changing the current ordinance language to make it more efficient and timely. So if you have questions or would like me to dive more detail, I will, but I don't want to take up your time.
Questions for Mr. Twain? Commissioner Douglas?
Actually, just a, a comment to precede a motion. This is something that we discussed at the planning commission, just the, the disconnects between zoning approval, special land use site plan approval, and liquor licenses. This is a business-friendly motion designed to make it easier for food service establishments to navigate our system. And I appreciate the, the work that the staff has done on this. So I will move approval of the resolution.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Twain.
Thank you, Mr. Twain.
Thank you for the hard work. You and the planning department, streamlining, making things better for our constituents is top priority. All right, that brings us to item 10, Approval of Special Event Ordinance Amendment First Reading.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners.
Chief Moore?
Thank you. What you have before you tonight is a first reading for a proposed change to our special events ordinance. And specifically, what, what this proposed change is involved is allowing the city commission, the city, or the police department to restrict or prohibit parking along neighborhoods and streets that are adjacent to special events in the city. And really, the, the crux of this, or where this came from, is Royal Oak continues to be a destination for special events, they continue to grow in scope, in size, in numbers. And really, we're, we're starting to hear our residents voice some concerns, specifically about how these events are growing, and really people parking in the neighborhoods, and really taking up that valuable space within the neighborhoods. So what you have before you tonight is the first reading of these proposed changes. And before you are a couple of options that you have, you also have the proposed changes of the ordinance highlighted in red in your packets that include the language to allow the city or the police department to make those parking restrictions during these events. And what they are is similar to what's already in place by ordinance to prohibit the parking for arts, pizza, and eats. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have this evening.
Questions for Chief Moore? Oh, okay, all right. I see some half hands. We'll go with Commissioner Collo, Commissioner Macy, and Commissioner Dubac. Oh, you're just waiting. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Mayor.
I do have a question. So at the moment, other than arts, pizza, and eats, you can't restrict parking in residential streets?
That's correct. That, that is the only special event where it's actually carved out to be able to do that, to make essentially a festival zone so that we can make that for resident parking only.
Okay. So you haven't done it in the past?
No.
Commissioner Collo?
So I recently read this really amazing article in Police One magazine, they talk about community policing, and, you know, the points again out and talking to our, our fellow citizens. And there's an example of a chief of police in southeast Michigan that just does an amazing job of it. This seems like one of those things that he would do, where he would want to go out and talk to the residents about how this impacts them. So seeing that you're picking up that baton and carrying it, I'm excited to recommend this on first reading.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, right?
That's a recommended, we do motions?
I was busy, yeah, I, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? No, I think putting the tools in our toolkit to make things, good decisions faster and better on behalf of our residents is, is key. And I'm surprised it took us a little bit to get to this point, but there's a new chief in town, I'd say sheriff. And so we got a good spot here, so I'm supportive of it. All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, this brings us to our last item on the agenda, which was added during the approval of the agenda, which is dealing with the recommendation and advice of counsel from our closed session related to the Hines case. Commissioner Macy?
I move that we proceed on, uh-oh, on Brian Hines, his next friend of Ava Hines versus City of Royal Oak and Officer Ghostow, as recommended by counsel in closed session.
Okay, we motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. That brings us to the end of the agenda tonight, notwithstanding anything for the betterment of our community at this moment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Perush?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Perush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on this critical motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Adjourn.